She's just getting back from vacation and she's trying to catch up, so. I'm good when you are.
Do you need to go?
She should. It is seven o'clock and I hereby call the February Board Meeting of the Village Tivoli Board of Trustees to order. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? We'll use the flag in the back tonight. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all very much. Before we get started, I want to welcome back our village clerk treasurer, Linda Gennella, who was absent from, I think, the last two meetings, so welcome back. It hasn't been the same without you. With all due respect to our deputy clerk. Before we get into regular business, at this point I maintain a motion to suspend the rules to allow the public to address the board on agenda items only. Motion's been made by the deputy mayor. Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Tonight, there's only one item on the agenda, and that is to establish a public hearing to discuss overriding the state mandated tax cap. We are in the process of developing the 2014-2015 operating budget. I expect that the proposed budget that I will present to the Board of Trustees will include a override of the tax cap, but there are steps in place that all municipalities must follow in order for us to do that, and one is establishing a public hearing for the purpose of hearing comments on that. So at this point, is there anyone? David or, I don't know your name, I'm sorry.
Pete.
Pete.
Why were we overriding? We did it last year, right?
We did it last year. There are expenses in this coming budget that I'm expecting that would require us to override it, and as I look back at the budget, we probably should have gone higher than what we did last year's budget. There is a 30% increase in health insurance alone. There's $45,000 in insurance costs that we have. We have an aging infrastructure that we need to seriously look at. We've got new bonds that have come up. We also have a whole new weather climate. I just came back from the Conference of Mayors, and one of the things that we talked about was budgeting for hurricanes, flooding, earthquake, winter storms like we've never had before. I would rather the village...
I don't think I've had storms like this. Is that...
In the last three years that I've been mayor, we haven't had these storms, so the budget that I will present to the board will probably include a tax cap.
Okay, so last year, you know, this is, in order to override the tax cap, a municipality has to pass a local law which is enforced for one year. So if we arrive at doing the budget and we see that we can't stay under the 2% area, you know, then we have the law in place if we have to go over it, you know. Last year, we did pass this law so that we could do that, and then we actually didn't end up exceeding the tax cap.
These kind of things should go to a vote of people, not just the board.
I'm sorry?
This stuff should go for us. We should vote on it.
Well, you actually do. Well...
The board has to...
Well, that, this is a state law. We don't make that requirement. This is a state law. And the state law dictates in order for us to do that. And again, I don't know if we will. My guess right now is that the budget that I, I'm sorry?
It happened last year.
Well, it did happen last year, and we probably should have gone higher than we did.
No, but what I'm saying is it...
Yeah, but it was very modest last year. It was 2.3%.
Right.
And wasn't there some calculus that we were later told that we actually did come under the tax cap last year? So we had this rule. We passed this law, and then we didn't have to use it really last year, but, you know, that's just one year, so.
This is just a formality that we have to do. This is what it is.
You're even going to be allowed to, in the Congress of January, to keep everybody out of the law?
We are allowed to do it. The fact that the, go ahead.
Were there, you're not running people who receive it, not going to receive it?
If the municipality overrides the tax cap, then the residents within that municipality are not entitled to the tax credit that the governor's office is putting out. But I can tell you, this is your opportunity to speak, not mine. Anything else? Seeing none, a motion to return to regular business? Motion's been made by trustee Bruno. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Moving on to a clerk's report. Clerk Nell?
We sold 400, actually, the deputy clerk sold 400, I gave her a check, and you completed 200 rolls, and no last month.
Thank you. You've had an opportunity to see the minutes from our January 15th board meeting. At this point, I entertain a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
So moved.
Motion's been made by the deputy mayor. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Moving on to schedule of upcoming events. Trustee Bruno, is there anything you want to mention regarding the Legion?
Yes, the Legion is having their roast beef dinner this Saturday. The building will open at 1:00. If they will begin at 3:00, if you have any interest, you can call the Legion here and ask for Commander Maybe. Just quickly too, speaking of an upcoming event, we are already, even with how many feet of snow on the ground, it'll be very easy to hide these stripes. We're looking at April 5th right now with the rain date of April 12. With this much snow, we would like to have another park, but we're going to have to wait and see if that happens, but plans are in the works for that. The usual bunny to grabs. So we'll keep you posted.
Thank you.
I think that's about it.
Perfect. I just had to get a date there. Treasurers' report. Hello. Clerk Nell?
In the general con, it's $9,707.94. In the private con, it's $13,672.92. And the sewer con, it's $2,409.92. Sorry, $2,409.92, that's what it's worth, $5,900.92.
At this point, I entertain a motion to accept the treasurer's report.
So moved.
Pardon me. Motion's been made by the deputy mayor. Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. I also would like to mention that our treasurer's report for each month is posted on our village webpage. The residents can take an opportunity to see where the dollars and cents are actually going. You've had an opportunity to review the vouchers for this month. Is there a motion to approve payment of the bills for this month?
So moved.
Motion's been made by the deputy mayor. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Trustee Israedi, zoning report?
Yes, at this time, there are a couple of building permits that have been issued and a sign permit for a total of $100. In addition to that, there are open permits for the renovation. I guess those involve the renovation of a kitchen, which is two signs. In addition, there were inspections to electric and one for insulation, which passed. So the total fees collected were $100 in this period. Did you want me to speak to the meeting that Joel and I...
Please, thank you.
With the inspection. Joel and I met with Bob Fennel and Steve Cole and their supervisors, Suprem, about two weeks ago. And we basically came up with some additions in the scope of services. We had a meeting in his full agreement to have the Red Hook Building Inspector and Code Enforcement Officer provide services to the Village of Tivoli. We pay them $15,000 a year for those services. And what our meeting was for was to basically review how they're doing, make sure that Suprem was aware of any issues that we have, and to improve the communication with them. They are using something called SCA software to record these things, which is the reason I get these next week printed out documents that come in your report every month. They say how many permits they've issued, what inspections they've done, but also what events they've attended to. So there are issues such as we have been concerned about people picking up their garbage cans at the end of the day in which their garbage service is supposed to pick up the garbage. We're trying to make sure that village code is followed in these ways, and what we've tended to do in order to improve the effectiveness of this relationship is to target particular violations. That seems to be more effective than just responding to issues that seem to come to us. We had a discussion of some of the zoning laws that were in the process of reviewing, such as home occupations, and they gave us some input on that. And after I had given those, the zoning review committee has recommended those to the village board. I would recommend that, we ask them for their view on them, because you do want to know that they're going to be able to enforce them, that they're clear enough, et cetera. We also talked about when these things were done, what we would do next year. So one of the issues we've looked at are things like unlicensed vehicles on property. There is in our current code a restriction against any unlicensed vehicles being in yards in the village. And in fact, if you have two or more, it's considered a junkyard, which is, which is not allowed in the village. So we may particularly, in the fall lecture, we've gotten this zoning code refreshed, it's particularly targeted at violation. It's one that disturbs the neighbors and they look at the building as not appropriate to residential use. We thought it was a good meeting, that it went well. There was a lot of good give and take. These guys are not shy. They'll let you know if they think what we're asking for is too vague or difficult to identify or difficult to take, to accord and prove. So it's been a very useful interchange, and we plan to do that at least twice a year and put that into the amended scope of services.
And we've discussed as a board amongst ourselves, the Village of Red Hook uses a zoning complaint form that they have on their webpage where residents can download this form. If there's something that they're noticing that may have been missed by the zoning enforcement officers, a resident can download this form and submit it. So we have a record of it, and we'd be able to stamp it in, what time it came in, what action was taken, and so on and so forth. So we understand there's a need to continue tightening our zoning, and that's exactly what we're doing. I want to thank you as a liaison, and thank you as well for partnering on this, so greatly appreciate it.
Can I just add if I can, you know?
And Joel came with me. It's always good to tech teammate, right? Because one person gets to talk and the other gets to listen.
Just, just that, you know, we've been in this intermunicipal agreement since about 2009.
Yeah.
I would certainly say at times I feel it hasn't worked as well for Tivoli as I would like it to. And, you know, I feel better about the communication that we established at this meeting, and particularly building that continued communication into the agreement if we make some tweaks, like by annual meetings of the kind we just had to make sure that this continues to function for Tivoli. Because we are giving it a 15,000 a year, so.
And I have a bias that they definitely know it's easier to handle than the people you don't know, so my bias is let's make this work. Because the alternative, obviously, is to identify another entity that could do this for us, but they are in the area and they do know the village, so that is helpful.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I do appreciate it. The first item on the agenda in terms of regular business is establishing that public hearing to discuss overriding the state's mandated mandated tax cap. I would like to propose that we hold the public hearing earlier in the month of March. I was looking at March 5th, which would allow us more time to work on the budget and to hear comments earlier before.
I have a question. Each department submitted to you their expected budget for the county. And our purpose in doing that was to get this process going a little sooner. I know that we got the preliminary draft last year, I think on the 1st of March.
You should probably have it, I would assume, probably in another week to 10 days.
Okay.
A proposed budget.
Okay.
We were a little delayed with a couple, getting some of the documentation in from some department heads and then some other issues that came up. You'll probably have it, I would say, probably in a week to 10 days. We're still waiting on some revenues to come in from the county as well as the state, so probably a week to 10 days.
And I understand that the budget that we have to present as the intentional budget to the village is on the 1st of April?
Yes.
Okay.
And then we have to have it adopted by, I don't know the timeline off the top of my head.
Very soon after.
Yeah.
Maybe the 1st of May.
Yeah. Right. On June 1st.
So if we were to do it March 5th, that's not a regular workshop?
No, that's why I was throwing it out. We could do it at the, we could do it the following week, which is, which is the 12th. I didn't know if we were, if you wanted to just use that whole workshop as a working workshop. Actually, the only reason I thought the 5th, but we could do it the 5th or the 12th.
The purpose of this is to get effective input from the village, so you don't, you do want to make it as a date that people...
A regular one?
To argue for the regular.
That's absolutely fine. Then we'll make it the 12th then. How's that?
If we felt we needed additional working time, we could have an earlier workshop.
Yeah, okay. That's fine. So this has to be done just so. Now, this will have to require a roll call vote, so it's establishing a day for a public hearing regarding the adoption by the village board of the Village of Tivoli. Local Law Number 1 of 2014, a local law to override the tax levy limit for the fiscal year 2014-2015. And as we stated, this public hearing will be held March 12th, 6:00 p.m. here at the American Legion. At this point, I entertain a motion to approve that resolution.
Setting the public hearing for which day then?
On March 12th.
And what time?
At 6:00 p.m.
So moved.
Motion's been made by trustee Israedi. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I think it's just helpful to, it is a little complicated, so I think just to explain to residents what I've got in front of me here. This, this, we are tonight setting a public hearing, which is required of any local law, and that law would eventually be to override the tax cap for one year. So come to the public hearing, so we can have your input.
Absolutely. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, a roll call vote. Deputy Mayor Griffith?
Aye.
Trustee Bruno?
Aye.
Trustee Israedi?
Aye.
Trustee Schneider?
Aye.
Motion carries. Linda, we'll have to submit all of that.
I'll go here.
Okay. The next couple of things I wanted to talk about are not on your agenda. Election Day for the Village of Tivoli is March 18th, from 12 to 9. There are two trustee positions that are up and running. From what I've been informed, Joel Griffith and Jean Anne Schneider have both submitted their petitions and will appear on the ballot for a two-year term as trustees. Do I have that correct?
Yes.
Absolutely. 12 to 9 at the Village Tivoli Firehouse for Election Day, March 18th. I spoke about that. Just a reminder, there's no parking, overnight parking on the Village of Tivoli during the months of November to, I believe it's April if I'm not mistaken.
It's November 15th through April 1st.
April 1st, okay. I have had a conversation with the sheriff's office regarding ticketing. Individuals that do park on the streets will be ticketed if you're parking overnight. If you need a ticket or a permit to park in municipal lots, please see the village clerk's office between 9 and 4:00 p.m., and you can obtain a municipal parking lot permit. Um, go ahead, please.
And also, I think it was further confusion because some folks even had the sticker for the lots, but that doesn't mean you can just leave your car there indefinitely.
Thank you.
Because we also need to clear the lots, so even if you have a sticker, maybe you have to move your vehicle by 9.
Yes.
Yeah, so.
It's on our village webpage?
There's no getting around shoveling at your car.
We try to call if we can, but a lot of times we get there.
And the benefit of the premise, you have contact, right?
Yeah, we try to call. We can't always call. It's Sunday morning, obviously.
But DPW does need to go with that. If you have any questions about it, it is on our village webpage, and you can go on to see when you need to be out of, need to be out of the lots. I think the deputy mayor will talk about it, but we have had unfortunately a rash of water main breaks within the Village of Tivoli. I think we had three in a one-month period. One was really severe where the tower did drain. I got the call, I think, around quarter after 6:00 in the morning. We were without water in the Village of Tivoli for a few hours, and water was back on and running by about 10:00 o'clock, and I think the tower was filled up by the third day. But it was a concern, obviously, with regards to not having any water in the Village of Tivoli with regards to any fire that may occur, so that was obviously a severe situation. It was a rare situation if the tower did drain, but as soon as our DPW superintendent was made aware, our guys ran right away, and we had the tower up and running within about three hours, as I said. So my thanks to our DPW for handling that. But having three water main breaks in one month period is, obviously, is a very strong concern to myself and to my colleagues on the village board, which is one of the reasons we're looking at either the Dutchess County Water, Waste Water Authority to come in or a private engineering, or a private firm to come in and look at taking over our water system. This is an aging water system that we have, and we can't continue to be patching these leaks and fixing these breaks. It's a great deal of money in terms of overtime and materials and so on and so forth.
And have you determined whether the Dutchess County Waste Water can help us raise funds for this?
There is funding available, and it does not impact our CBPG possibilities. I did look into that, which was a good point, but I did speak with the county executive on that. So I did want to mention that. What we try to do in the event of a water main break or leak, if your water's going to be turned off, we do try to email everyone through my email alert. We put it out on Twitter and Facebook, and we do it through the radio newspapers. If you're not on my email alert list, please send an email to mayor@tivolienny.org. Just put "update" in the subject line, and we'll be sure to send an email out to you as soon as we have information. We'll let you know when the water's being turned off and when it's been restored, and any other information that you need to know about. I would be remiss if I didn't talk about the tragedy that occurred in the Village of Tivoli a few weeks ago. As many of you know, two young girls died on 9G when a car traveling south on 9G hit them. The driver was allegedly intoxicated, and those two girls were killed walking on 9G. I want to say how impressed I have been by the outpouring of support that this community has given to our emergency response crews and to Bard personnel and to the families of those two young girls. I've been extremely impressed by the way that Dr. Botstein and his entire organization has handled this situation. It's a huge loss to the Bard community and family, and a huge loss to us. And my sincere thanks to Bard, to our fire department rescue squad, to the Dutchess County Sheriff's Office, state police, as well as the Village of Red Hook Police Department, and Dr. Kerry Reber, who was a medical examiner. Everyone that responded to that scene has my heartfelt thanks and gratitude, and I know I speak for the village board when we say that that intersection has been a subject of concern to us for many years. Myself and the deputy mayor attended a meeting at Bard College two weeks ago, I think it was, with the county executive, state legislators, the DOT, and Bard personnel. Just to talk about that intersection in particular and what we need to do to get that intersection readdressed, really. I think the one thing that came out of that meeting is that that whole corridor really needs to be reevaluated to let people that don't know about that corridor, they need to know that there's a village tucked away over here, and that there's a college community tucked off of 9G. And it's going to take a lot of work and a lot of resources and a lot of thinking to figure out what we want to do with that corridor. But my heart goes out to the entire community of Bard and to those families of those two young girls, and I want to thank this village and thank my colleagues for the outpouring of support. Mr. Deputy Mayor, you were at that meeting. You want to add anything as to where we are and what we're doing?
Well, as you said, county executive, many officials from Bard, state senator, state assemblyman, two representatives from the DOT. I guess what I'm saying is a lot of, all the parties who should have been there were there. And, you know, it happened exactly one week after the tragedy, so I think a lot of it was touching base and trying to process it, but it's, but I think something I got out of that is you know, the demographics in the area have changed. The college has grown. For folks who grew up around here, we're aware of 9G as a rural highway where people are traveling at high speeds. There's no shoulder. We know about that, but there are also more people, certainly many of the students who come to the college who maybe aren't aware of what that road is, and, you know, certainly ask them to be very careful. And at that meeting, it was resolved that all those individuals would get together, all those entities would get together again and again, and continuing to work on improving safety on 9G, improving awareness of when you're on a campus, when you're in a village, when you're on a highway, and anything else that we can come up with, and I found the, particularly the gentlemen from the DOT were quite responsive to the concerns.
Absolutely. And if I could just say one thing, stay off of social media in terms of getting your information. There was a lot of inaccurate information that was posted on, on social media, and I just want to say if you if you have questions about anything that happened, to reach out to my office or speak to any of the trustees in or of Bard College, and we can get you, get you the information. I do want to thank all of the local newspapers, actually. How often is it to hear politicians thank the press? But I do want to say thank you to The Observer, and to The Freeman, and to The Journal, and The Register-Star for the admirable way that your papers covered this situation. I think it was done very, very well. It was, it was done with that small community feel to it, so my thanks to your paper and to your publisher, so, well done. The next board meeting of the Village of Tivoli Board of Trustees will be held March 19th, 7:00 o'clock here at the village hall. There will be a workshop prior. And the, as we mentioned, March 12th at 6:00 p.m. will be the regular workshop of the Board of Trustees. At this point, I return the floor over to committee reports. Mr. Deputy Mayor?
As Mayor mentioned, we had three water main breaks along Broadway. First one on January 3rd, second one at Faroe. So the first one was up towards the monument, the top of the hill above the bridge there, heading out to 9G on January 3rd. The second one, further into the village at the intersection of Faroe and Broadway. That was on the 6th of January. It was about, I think, Friday and Monday. And then another one the next day, on the 7th, at 87 Broadway, just across the street from this building. It was during a polar vortex and extremely cold weather, which, as we all know, our aging water system doesn't care for that cold weather. And I would just add how responsive our DPW have been and to get out there and dig the water in that cold weather. I'm personally grateful for their work. And the last thing I would add in the water report, a new motor was installed on the well, the 2P W well on the 17th of January, so new motor there. And thanking spring again, the Tivoli Community Garden, we did have some response. We've got eight plots left, so while we had a deadline, we're keeping it open. At this point, it's kind of a first come, first served basis. Yeah, so picture spring and soft warmers and growing things. So if you're interested in a plot, we do ask that you be a Tivoli resident. It's 30 bucks for an 8x12 plot. You can share it with a buddy. And if you're interested, you can send an email to tivoliengiarden@gmail.com. And we are intending to make some major improvements to the garden in the form of raised beds, and we can't wait to get eight more people and fill up the garden, so please give us a thought. Even if you have space at home, it's fun to be in the community garden where you can pull the stubborn weeds with your friend next to you talking, so. And that's all I've got.
Trustee Israedi, I'm sorry. Sorry about that.
The, it's time to receive the points for the...
It's time to receive the points for the LoSec program and I haven't heard from Tommy Christie, but I'm sure he's busy capitalizing them. I do have that happy news that the LoSec's fund manager, RBC Wealth Management, who manages the investment of the $80,000 that's currently put aside for service awards for fire. Had a good December. I don't know if any of you follow the markets, but the equity markets were up about 30% this year and 30% of that fund is invested in equities and their total return is above 11% for the year, which, given the behavior of the bonds in that portfolio, which was hard to work to, was a good outcome. I'd also like to compliment the Fire Department for the wonderful job that they did in dealing with the deaths up on Route 9G. These guys were the guys who had to give CPR, had to go and then be deposed because these young ladies died. Mark Collinero put together some grief counseling for them. They've had a rough few years and we should be very proud for people who volunteer to do these very difficult tasks.
Trustee Gruber?
I'd like to just reiterate that, that in my head's eye, to our Fire Department, they've been through the mill.
Some of these people who are involved are 20 years old.
They're young.
They're really.
But they continue to just move on.
Yeah.
Along with the dinner this coming weekend, keep in mind breakfast at the Masons last Sunday every month. April 5th, again, that could be a date for an Easter party here in town. And if you were to live at the park, you may not think so, but my intent is to have another summer program after home melts maybe by August. And even though it's cold and snowy, keep in mind that the library has many programs for everyone, so you can get out and get into August.
Thank you. Trustee Schneier?
Just going to touch on the shared services meeting that Mayor Pena and I attended. Just to give you an update on that, we did backstory of Jamie Grant to fund a study for the feasibility of shared services between the village and town of Red Hook and the village of Tivoli. This past week's meeting was when we sat down with the consultant that we chose to perform the study and we went through contract paperwork, clarified scope of work, just worked out some of the details as to expectations on both sides of the table there. We do have an additional meeting scheduled in March to review everything. We do need some signatures to finalize moving forward with the contract. And then comes the work, of course, of beginning the study to see how that feasibility comes into play. Ultimate goal is to determine if there are services that can be shared, if there's effective cost savings that can be realized by all three municipalities, if there are intermunicipal agreements that can be formed. The consultant would assist us in ways to implement that as well. So Villa is moving forward at a very nice pace. We have our timeline and we're all able to realize that, so it's actually coming together very nicely.
And one of the things that this particular engineering firm talked about was that there would be a webpage that's actually designed to follow along the scope of this entire project. So residents would be able to actually go on a webpage to actually take a look to see conversations that are taking place, the studies that are being done. There will be public forums and conversations that take place here in the Village of Tivoli, the Village of Red Hook, as well as the town of Red Hook. And then another final wrap-up, but I think there will be as many public forums as necessary. The engineering firm that we're looking at did get the fact that we're a small community, as are the town and the village of Red Hook, and that we want to maintain our unique feel and character in the Village of Tivoli. And that if we do end up consolidating some services and sharing services, we're not losing anything in the Village of Tivoli, we're actually gaining services. We'd be able to gain some of the experience and the manpower and the equipment and the resources that both the town and the village have. So we're grateful to the county executive for this grant, a $79,000 grant that we received. And we're looking forward to working with the two municipalities on this. And we expect, I think, 2015 is when we'll see a complete study. And then it's up to the boards to decide whether or not we're going to do it. We may look at their study and say, "Thank you, keep it." Or we may take and say, "This is great, let's consolidate and/or share." It's up to the three municipalities, so it's not going to be anything that we're rushed into. We're looking at at least 2015 before we're actually done. Court report?
Court report, actually, very easy, there's not actually many footprints on, so I don't have anything to report on that.
I think court was adjourned due to the weather. Is there anyone wishing to provide any comment to the Village Board at this point? This is when we open it up, so any comments? Go ahead.
First, I want to say, Drawo's are a town guide. We've been backing against it for a while, so we've done a good job. I want to thank her for making a call, getting rid of my leads, first time I've called her. Haven't had a chance to thank her. My big issue right now is this main road, it was a county road.
Yeah.
Our county executive used to be mayor. And is there any kind of strong-arm tactic or whatever you've got to do to get this road flagged and winded and bridged?
Yeah.
First, I understand the consultant's opinion, but I mean, it's horrendous.
I had a conversation with the highway supervisor today regarding this particular road. And once the weather breaks, this road will be, it's going to get the facelift that it needs.
And any of your neighbors who's out have done wrong too, they just sunk right into the block.
There's a lot of repairs that need to be done with regards to this road, starting with the intersection. When you drive into the Village of Tivoli, you'll see that intersection's actually sunk down. That's all going to be removed and redone.
This coming this spring?
This spring, that's going to be done. We're also putting crosswalks across from Village Hall, which is actually a recommendation of Karen Cleveland. We're going to put a crosswalk from the Village Hall over to Pine Street. Yeah, similar to what the Village of Red Hook has. So we're going to do that.
It's been done with CHIPS money, isn't it?
Yes.
We have about $68,000, $85,000, a lot of money that is county or state money.
State funds that we have.
That is where we do the job of getting reimbursed for it, so it does not raise your taxes.
We had the engineer go out a while ago and actually we've got a meeting coming up with the engineer with regards to the CHIPS program and to what we're actually going to be spending the money on. But a complete review was done of the village. This road, obviously, is a county road, but the roads within the development, especially our road, so we're going to be repairing those as well as some of the...
There are none as bad.
No, there's a couple spots, but this is bad, yeah. Actually, Deputy Mayor talked about that, I think, last week at the workshop. Yeah, yeah.
My recommendation is use Kiddling.
You're exactly correct, that the, you know, the worst stretch of roadbed in the village is from the four corners down to the bridge.
Yeah, yeah.
Which is, it's hard on your suspension.
We don't want somebody to flag off as concrete. You've been around here a long time, remember.
It's hard for Joe because he lives right there, so he can't work.
Yeah, but we are aware of that. We did talk about that last week.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, absolutely. Start at the beginning.
Any talk about one of the departments shows stopping up on 9G?
Yes.
Can you ruminate that again?
Yes. That came up at our meeting last week. I'm very concerned about that, as is Deputy Mayor. Two days after the accident, I think I saw someone walking around with their iPad or their iPhone and kind of walking into traffic. We did mention that to Bard and I think that they took that very seriously, yeah, absolutely.
Does the loop stop there?
No. I don't believe so. It's not a regular stop.
Or they stop anywhere it's marked, right? The loop?
The loop is, yeah, the loop's required to stop when someone weighs them down.
If it's a safe area. I think the loop, though, will only stop if they, if the driver deems it safe.
I got something to say.
I may interrupt it, but I think...
Years ago, there wasn't as many large students back in homes along 9G as soon as that they are now. Could sell this, so and so could sell some of that renting. And they were north of the intersection, right?
Just barely north, yeah.
So they were headed up, so it happened.
It's many bad.
The official word from Bard is that they were walking south on 9G coming back from one of those homes to get the shuttle. The shuttle is actually still running despite what was put in some of the social media. The shuttle is still running and those young girls were actually walking to get to the shuttle. Yeah. But we did talk about it, Dave. Absolutely, great with you.
They moved the shuttle over here around Pine Street.
I missed, I'm sorry?
They moved the shuttle over on Pine Street.
Yeah.
To get the Bard's noise and condition. Now they can say a different bus, you know, sidewalks, it's one of the sidewalks, the other. Now they're walking the street. There's no problem around here at night when traffic should be.
There was, yeah, there was, I believe, discussion with the Department of Transportation, right, about the issue particularly along 9G because there has been long been by the town as well as the village, I hope that bicycle lanes or trails or something. One of the problems is that there's no shoulder.
Long way in the village, there's sidewalks. Do that show? Now, they're not showing.
Yeah, and you're exactly right. Normally what we would do is we would send the guys out. Right.
It's an exceptional weather event.
Right.
So shovel, shovel, why?
Right. Normally what we would do, when we did this last week, is that we would send our DPW crew out to shovel people and then send them the bill. We did that. We had them out on the sidewalks the other day. The problem is that our guys have been so tied up with other issues right now, they can't. But we are trying to do the best we can to getting people to shovel their walks. But as Susan said, this has been one of the worst...
Those walkers had to shovel the fire.
I agree with you, David.
Let's tighten up the...
Got the airwalks out, they've been...
Make it regular. And start reducing some fines. Because we've got the news in New York City, you can't shovel for four hours, it's $150,000 in fines, there's no way.
We don't have that in our law right now. We don't fine someone for not shoveling their sidewalk. What we do is our DPW will go and shovel or snowblow, whatever the case may be, and then we send them the bill. Our law does not state that we can fine them. Part of what I think the zoning review is looking at a lot of different areas and it may be something that we do consider. Right now, it's not part of our law, if I understand it correctly. Trustee is ready.
There's still night parking, do you hear me?
I can't hear you. I'm for some reason.
There's still overnight parking?
I agree.
It still exists?
Yes.
The police will be here through the night because there was, he was just under control if you wanted to do it. And there's parking out here on Broadway or somewhere. But he said he would get out of the tickets. If he had to get one ticket, he had to get everybody's ticket. And I said, "Well, what's wrong with that?"
What day was that conversation?
It was noon. There was a camper parked out there. A camper, basically.
I saw the camper. That issue, that issue has been resolved, by the way.
He checked that thing off. Didn't have anybody's place on it other than the sheriff. Two hours, we got letters.
That, the ticketing issue has, I had a detailed conversation with the captain on that issue the other day.
What's it, I mean, what were you all talking about? You talking about overnight? Are you talking about parking until 2:00, 9:00, until 12:00?
You're not allowed, there's no overnight parking. I think it starts at 10:00 PM?
1:00.
1:00, I'm sorry.
1:00.
1:00 AM to 6:00 AM. You can't park on the streets.
From November 15th to April 1st.
Yeah.
So that we can get in and plow and have the roads clear for the fire truck and everything else.
We made any progress with the zoning for a little?
Yeah, that's what Susan talked about tonight, yeah.
Is there any way possible to, he won't say before.
I don't know, I assume it's 4:95.
Is there any way to do it over here sometimes at night? Because not everything happens between hours and...
The parking is a village law that we have police that can deal with that. I don't think that's...
He doesn't, that wouldn't be his area. Are you talking about noise or...
Trash, lights that are shining in people's backyards, stuff like that. You don't see a light during the day, but inside the night, if you come across a cleaning property...
I think part of this, right.
Because at night, and that's not daytime, not day.
One of the things I think that this zoning complaint form will be able to do is allow us to actually see it. And if this is a repetitive thing, then we can then assign that to the zoning officer. If it's brought to his attention, then he can do that. I don't think there's anything specifically that says he can, only needs to work 8 to 4, 9 to 5. Obviously, if a situation presents itself, if we need to think outside the box, I think we can do that. They did raise our rate $3,000, so I think we can get them to come up.
They need to work it out.
Well, especially if it's you...
Previous zoning laws have been violated in the evening.
But it would be helpful if you have these to fill out the form and...
I was going to suggest if you identify a specific thing, say such-and-such light shining in such-and-such yard, you know, use this new form that we're going to implement and then we can keep placing it on the desk.
It works in the Village of Red Hook, that's why we're...
Trash is still an issue, I don't know. The trash ordinance, I guess, is so underneath, it's pathetic. We're still using paper bags and they were very good. Don't hold me on this side of the earth, you have to follow this plan.
Okay. We have to work on...
It's so thick, it's easy to cut it out.
That's exactly what Trustee is ready is doing. We understand that.
We have to work on, we have to start with the ones that we heard about first.
Right. There's a lot of work to do.
So now we're on...
And it costs us $7,500 to do the ones that we've just done. And that includes the village planner donating a lot of time and it doesn't cover the legal costs. So these things, they seem like obvious things to do, but they are expensive to do. And we will get at them in due course, but they have to be done over a period of time or it becomes onerous on the taxpayer.
But you're correct that it's out of date. I mean, it also dates not long.
Is it so?
We are going to do, we are going to do something that will thrill you, I think. We're going to have, we're going to have, we've given the zoning enforcement officer the right to immediately give a violation notice. And we're going to make it neon pink and paste on the trash cans so we're trying to use embarrassment and...
So you don't have to go through that process of a letter, certified letter, on that note. It's all right.
The code about car parking in driveway or in the front yard, that's an issue.
That is...
All right, it's a whole thing, that's very clear.
Yes, and we're going to have a targeted effort to do that.
You put a single flag?
That was mentioned tonight.
I'm still disappeared, I can't see where people's eyes are right now.
Yeah.
Yep.
It's regular. So, are they building a skate park in Bard? I heard a rumor.
I'll throw that to Trustee Bruber.
Not necessarily a skate park. We have the opportunity to have a ramp. So we'll be going to planning for it.
I think all those things they go back and...
Half-pipe.
Half-pipe.
I think the concern that the board had, first of all, this item, this piece was being donated by Bard College. Doesn't cause the village anything. The concern that we had is that there are already people skateboarding down Broadway, they're skateboarding off of the slide, they're skateboarding off of tables, makeshift ramps.
That would be a very good answer.
And we're going to police it, you know, we're going to take a look at it. If, you know, if there's problems, then we'll address it. You know, this is a huge decision that we've been weighing, but people are already doing it. So we are putting in a half-pipe, is that what it's called?
Half-pipe.
Half-pipe.
Whole pipe is a circle and the half-pipe is a half-pipe, border pipe.
I wasn't a skater, dude.
I've got my chin scarf in the park over there yet.
I think one positive twist to that is Chris Hoffman having the boardroom in Red Hook, that we could work in conjunction with him. And...
Hook that we could work in conjunction with him. And.
The Red Hook has another park.
Yeah. And we did our homework on it to see, and there were no, we spoke with the director of recreation about it. There were no complaints or reservations that he had about it. Yeah.
It could be a small village when you're 15, 16, 17 to find something fun to do.
You can redirect them in a positive way.
Yes.
Can help eliminate some of the issues that we've already seen going off the park.
Don't walk through, we already had this conversation. If there's nothing further, at this point, I would entertain a motion to adjourn in memory of Sarah McCausland and Evelyn Brown.
And unfortunately, I'd like to have Bernie Teeger. We haven't had a meeting since he passed as well.
That's right. I apologize.
No, it's quite all right. So.
Absolutely.
So moved.
Motion's been made by the deputy mayors. Our second?
Second.
We are adjourned. Thank you all. Thank you.